Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to talk to us about running for District One for on Portland City Council. I'd like to start off by having each of you introduce yourself. Give just a quick overview about why you're running. And Terrence, if you wouldn't mind going first, it'd be great.
Thank you. How you doing? My name is Terrence Hayes. I am running for City Council in District One. I think what's very important for me is that we're a clean, safe and affordable city. I think that my lived experience allows me to bridge the gap between community and policing. I am a person that believes both in accountability in our criminal justice system and the absolute need for restorative justice. And I'm really, I'm really great. Sorry about that. I'm really grateful that I have the lived experience and the life that allows me to speak to that honestly. As a small business owner, I understand the importance of protecting our businesses, of growing and developing businesses in our city, and finding a way to bring investors back into our community. And I love this city. It's a clean city, at least it was, and I want to get it back really clean. My company does graffiti removal and pressure washing for the city. So I have a unique view of what it takes strategically to get us to be a clean city again. So clean, safe and affordable is why I believe I should be on City Council and what I bring uniquely to this space.
Great, thank you very much. Noah, if you can please go next.
All right. My name is Noah Ernst. Obviously, I'm running for City Council in District One and I'm running for, because I share the frustrations with the directions the city has gone in in the last, you know, five, seven years with a lot of the people in Portland. I come from, I have a very diverse background of business ownership. I've been a short order cook. I've pulled green shade and lumber mill. I've practiced law and, and I now work at Radio Cab and I've been a cab driver and now a superintendent for them. And I have a background in working with the most diverse groups of people that you can possibly imagine in industry. And if I can't work with them, then we can't, I can't succeed as a superintendent and we can't succeed as a company. And I want to bring that real world experience to City Council. I want to support, I've really focused on public safety and I'm really focused on accountability. I feel like we're spending huge amounts of money, especially to address homelessness, and we're getting very little results in terms of the number of homeless people on our streets keeps increasing. And we really need to focus on where is the money that the city is spending going? And how can we spend it more efficiently? And then I'm really devoted to listening to and advocating for the people of East Portland. Feel like East Portland obviously has been neglected historically and a lot of people like to tell East Portland what it needs. We need to listen to the people of East Portland. They will tell us what they need. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Candace, if you wouldn't mind going next.
Great, hello, everybody. Nice to see you. I'm Candace Avalos. She/her pronouns, obviously running to represent District One. I am a first generation American, daughter to Guatemalan immigrants and black Americans from Southern Virginia. I began my first decade long career as an educator in K through 12 and then also at Portland State University, and now serve as the Executive Director of Verde. And we do environmental justice work across Portland and across the state. We all know that the challenges facing Portland are many and are complex, but as a longtime civic leader, I've shown my love for this city by advocating to make it better. I have a record of working with diverse stakeholders to get things done and I'm eager to bring my policy expertise and my community minded leadership to City Hall. I truly believe that, I believe in solutions that are addressing the root cause and are grounded in all of our shared values. I believe in a policy agenda that can correct the historic injustices and failed promises, especially for East Portland. I believe our city is safest when our communities are resourced. But most importantly, I believe in Portland and I'm running to turn our values into action. East Portland voters have long felt left out of our city's vision for progress, but I plan to change that as a champion for District One. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Steph, if you can go next, please.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Steph Ralph. I too am running for Portland City Council, District One, East Portland. I grew up in Park Rose and now live in Lentz. I've lived east of 82nd Avenue for the majority of my life and that has shaped me. I'm running for Portland City Council to ensure the government is finally accountable to the people of East Portland and that all of us can live, build a life of purpose and belonging here. It's no secret, and others have mentioned this, that East Portland has not had anywhere near the investments that the rest of the city has enjoyed. In spite of that, as the first Executive Director of Oregon Walks, I secured funding for sidewalks and road maintenance and also advocated to bring 82nd Avenue into local control. I have extensive experience bringing community and agency partners together in support of community right revitalization, such as when I served as a committee co-chair for the Jade District as it was forming over a decade ago. And my service on the Planning Commission over the last five years offers me a unique expertise among my colleague candidates on how to get more affordable housing built quickly. So voters in our new district, our brand new District One will be asked to rank up to six candidates for three seats this election. And I bring the skills and experience to serve as a collaborative leader in our new system of government, prioritizing the needs of East Portland. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Loretta, if you can introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Loretta Smith and I am a public servant, a small business owner, grandmother and mom who served for eight years on the Multnomah County Commission, trying to help to improve the lives of many folks who live in East Portland. As a third generation Oregonian, I was the first in my working class family to go to college. As a Multnomah County Commissioner and member of the US Senate, my old boss, we were, you know, we were determined to deliver results for East Portland, creating opportunities for underserved youth, helping seniors stay in their home, identifying federal grants for nonprofits who do work in our community. And so for me, I'm running because I have experience, leadership, I have a track record taking on tough fights and delivering results for the improvement of the lives of people who live in East Portland. I spent a lot of time trying to make sure that we had an East County courthouse, that we had Cully Park that basically sat on a dump site and use county funds to help the city to build a place where people could feel comfortable and safe. I know that it's important to strengthen public safety. And I think by adding community police officers and investing in our, in, in our public safety entities like fire and police and the 911 system, that that will make our neighbors feel comfortable and it will give us a sense of what the possible is. I want to make sure that we create good jobs by supporting workforce and trades and small business and eliminating the, the digital divide. I think that we can lower costs and fees for East Portland residents by streamlining government, streamlining, aligning the permitting system, tackling the housing prices and fixing our roads and building sidewalks for many of us who don't have them in East Portland.
Great, thank you very much. So I'm just going to start off and rotate in terms of who goes first. Noah, you'll be first on this question. East Portland residents are finally guaranteed some representation on council. What are the top two issues that you're hearing from residents that they want action on and what would you do?
Oh, I, I think that's a really easy one. It's, it's got to be public safety slash law enforcement and homelessness. The two biggest issues, especially in East Portland. I am hearing from a lot of people that the 911 hold times are incredibly frustrating. I spoke with a gentleman when I was out knocking on doors this morning, talked about calling up the non-emergency number and being disconnected after 45 minutes because they simply couldn't get to his call. Clearly, that's unacceptable and that's the kinds of things that you hear from people in East Portland. You hear about, you know, people calling 911 and not having a police arrive or police arrive far too slowly to ever make a difference in terms of catching criminals in the act or other things. And so they really want more police in the community. They really want more police presence and they want the sense that, and this is where it sort of ties over into homelessness, the sense that the laws and rules apply to everybody. And when you talk to people in East Portland and they're seeing, you know, those Winnebagoes abandoned slash parked along their streets and they're getting parking tickets, but those sit there forever. It becomes a sense that the law isn't applied equally or fairly and they're really frustrated by that. Obviously homelessness is a huge issue around the city. It's an even bigger issue, I think, in East Portland. We don't have often the, the amount of resources devoted to East Portland that you see maybe in downtown or other parts of the city. And yet we have huge amounts of people camping. We have those streets that are lined with those Winnebagoes. And the people of East Portland are really frustrated and they really want to figure out where all this money that's being spent on homelessness is going, why that we don't see results. They want to, I've, I've never met someone in East Portland who isn't compassionate, but their compassion is tempered with, we want to help people who want help. We want to help people who want to improve their lives. And that's what they want to see happen. And they're very frustrated with the idea that there's people who the city is spending a huge amount of money on who are rejecting help or rejecting services or want to stay on the street.
Okay, thank you. And I am going to change my question just a bit to be, to focus on the two top priorities, which, which Noah, you did, especially because we're going to dive into a lot of these issues a little bit more. Candace, if you can go next, what are you hearing are the top two priorities from residents?
Yeah, thank you. I definitely agree that addressing our housing and homelessness crisis and addressing just our community safety needs are the top two issues. And I really see those as being the top two issues that are wrapped around environmental injustice and infrastructure as well. So yes, I'm hearing about people's frustration and, you know, the perception and reality of safety. But safety is not just about gun violence. It's about the fact that East Portlanders are dying disproportionately on our streets, our unsafe streets. It's about the fact that not having lighting and sidewalks and basic infrastructure also adds to our, our feeling of not being safe. And so I think the connection of that to the top two issues for Portlanders is what I'm going to be focusing on. Thank you.
Thank you. Steph, same question for you.
Great, I think similarly with public safety and houselessness, I hear, I have similarly had a lot of conversation with a lot of people in community on their doors in East Portland. And I hear a lot of compassion for folks who are unhoused and, and that recognizing that we do not have enough shelter beds currently. And so we need to, our unhoused population is also our most diverse population in terms of age, in terms of race, in terms of ability, everything except class. Oregon has the dubious honor of having the most, the highest rate of unsheltered, unhoused families with children. And so we need, I believe, a diversity of shelter options. And serving on the Planning Commission, one of the, the issues that we dealt with in the last four years was the Shelter to Housing Continuum of how do we diversify the toolkit of shelter options to ensure that it is context sensitive? We also need to make sure that there is equity for citing those shelters within District, in District One and across the city. I think of community safety as being a web of safety. And I think both Noah and Candace touched on the fact that it is, that there is a portfolio, that there is, it is also environmental design. It's, it's also people knowing their neighbors. It's after school programs. It's eyes on the street. I think as the Executive Director of Oregon Walks, I recognize that walkable neighborhoods allow a greater, greater levels of connection, that neighbors know neighbors, that we look out for each other because we, we have what we, I, I hear a lot of called the, the meaningful inefficiencies that our community, that people just find each other, recognize each other and look out for each other. And so those, those are a few aspects.
Thank you. Loretta, what are you hearing are the top priorities in your district?
What I'm hearing is families in East Portland are experiencing a burden of rising costs and, and they're feeling unsafe in their communities. So public safety is going to be a huge priority that I put upfront and actually trying to make sure that East Portlanders catch up with the rest of the city. Currently, we make an average of $60,000 a year in East Portland compared to the other parts of the city that have an average of 90, 90,000 a year. And if we're not going to be strong on public safety, pedestrian safety and fighting for a strong economy, those are the things that people are talking about. It's not enough just to say we, we need to deal with homelessness and housing because you all know that I was one of the, one of the elected officials who were brave enough to talk about putting homeless people in Wapato. And I fought that for many years, 2016, 2017. And God, thank you for Julia Brim Edwards and, and, and the, the rest of the commissioners who came to the knowledge that, that the new Bobby Lakes is worthy of, of public funding and worthy of having those folks get trained, go, go to addiction services, go to work every day. So I think for me to boil it down, it's public safety, pedestrian safety and building a healthy economy for East Portland.
Thank you. And Terrence, how about you? What are the top priorities you're hearing from about?
So I think we all agree in ways that is when you, when we're talking to East Portland folks, it's always a matter of public safety. They're always talking about the inability to get police to answer and show up when they need officers and RVs and tents taking over public right of ways. And I think the answer to that is, is really simply twofold. Once, one, we have to make sure that we're properly funding staffing and make sure police have the adequate staffing. East Portland has been clear when they call for officers, they do not get officers showing up in a reasonable amount of time and they're over it. So leaders have to be ready to look at officer staffing numbers, look at best practices and make sure that Portland, Oregon has best practices in policing, that our officers are well trained, they're held accountable, but they answer the phone and get there right. When 911 calls matter, we have to get officers to show up. So despite anything, East Portland folks want officers to show up. And right now, PPB is not adequately staffed, neither for the amount of people that we've allowed through funding nor best practice nationally. So we just need to start there. Secondly, as far as our homelessness, this, we, we are making some really good progress. And even folks in East Portland is seeing some change. We have to continue in this path. We have to clear our public right of ways. They belong to everybody, right? Our families, like Loretta said, families are over the inability to go to public spaces, feel safe and be able to move forward. So we have to answer that unsanctioned camping have to end. We have to put more overnight shelters up so that people are safe. Gun violence, sex trafficking, drug use is the highest in caps at this period of time. And people are not safe and we have to make hard choices to get our most vulnerable community safe by getting them off of concrete and off of grass and into shelters.
Great, I'd like to use that to jump into my next question and Candace, you'll be first on that. Would you support ending unsanctioned camping? Would you, or would you do anything to, for instance, pull back the anti-camping ban that was passed?
Yeah. So I think ultimately I'll start with my value and understanding the reality of our situation. We have not and we have never had and do not have enough shelter for folks. And so I think urgently we need to be focusing on solutions that are addressing the need right now, realizing that if we are saying that we need to put everybody in shelter and we don't have enough shelter, then what's the other alternative until we can build up that infrastructure? So I support us approaching that in a way that is cost effective as well because sweeps, as we know, are very expensive and they're not solving the problem. So I want to see us use our budget responsibly. I want to see us really interrogate for ourselves, what are the needs and why are the options that we're providing not enough? I think that's our responsibility to assess that and ensure that we're providing options that are attractive to folks and realizing that folks have different needs on the street. That is what the Shelter to Housing Continuum is all about.
So does that mean that you would want to see a lot more shelter, temporary shelter on the streets so that you have those options?
Yeah, I think that shelter, I think having the tiny pods is really important as well because the dignity of closing a door and being able to feel like you can, you know, protect your belongings and yourself really is more attractive to folks that have been struggling on the streets. And so I want to see those get stood up a lot quicker.
And would you do, and would you seek to repeal the, the current ban on, just the, the ban in terms of jailing people or criminalizing if people reject a, a reasonable offer of accommodation?
I don't believe we have reasonable offers available for everybody that needs it. So I guess the answer to your question.
Absolutely, but we.
Yeah, the answer to your question is I don't support the ban in its current form, correct?
And, and would you seek to repeal it?
I don't know if repeal is the right word, but sure. I, I think ultimately we need a different solution than the way that the current ban is structured. So yes.
Okay, great. Steph, same set of questions for you in terms of your views on unsanctioned camping? And, you know, would you take any action to either pull back, change, repeal the, the current law regarding camping?
Okay, thank you. Mine is going to sound actually a fair bit like Candace because I think that, 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 that that's really thoughtful. And I mentioned earlier that we, that our unhoused population is also our, our most diverse population. We do not have enough shelter to accommodate our, our unhoused neighbors. And, and we do not have the diversity. One thing that I did as part of the, what, what I had mentioned of the Shelter to Housing Continuum project is a few other commissioners and I, this was, I think, four years ago, called for City Council to our staff to, to do an inventory of underused lots that are owned by the city. And so, you know, that, that are not being used for any purpose that could potentially be used for, they could be used for shelter. It could also be used for community gardens, for parks, for other uses. But what are those, what is the inventory of those lots? And how can we use that as the beginning of a conversation to more, more actively, more quickly cite shelters to get people, the, the, the stable housing shelter that they need in order to provide wraparound services and get them into affordable housing options? So I think that there's two pieces of, of ensuring that people have supportive housing because we do not have enough shelter. And then really promoting housing production, which is another thing that I hope we're going to talk about at some point around how do we, how do we get deeply affordable housing and the amount of housing that we need? Because a lot of folks we're hearing are unhoused because the rent is too high. And so I, I do not support the camping ban in its current form. And I don't know if I would look to, repealing could be an option. But I think, I think really aggressively looking at how are we sheltering people? And how are we getting past this housing crisis?
Thank you. Loretta, same questions for you about your views on unsanctioned camping or actions?
I would not work to repeal it. I think that this is, we moved into a direction because we, we, in the past, and social services is what Multnomah County did. That's what I did for eight years. That's not the job of the City Council, but it is a responsibility because we took housing and homelessness out of the city. We give 30 to, to $60 million a year to go. So here's the deal. Nobody is talking about these 5,300 people that are, that are unhoused on our city streets. Multnomah County is getting $350 million. And you mean to tell me that's $350 million more than I had when I was working as a county commissioner to be able to appropriate dollars to services into this whole homeless and housing infrastructure? So I would start with the 5,300. We have a lot of unsanctioned homeless camps and RVs. I live out here by Sandy and 156 and it's just, it's, it's a nightmare. So no, I wouldn't do that. I would start with the 35%, the 35% vacancy rate that we have in downtown Portland. Take some of these housing, housing opportunities, some of these office buildings, and we need to house that 5,300 first. We have had the philosophy of, of permanent housing first. Permanent housing first does not work. We need to put folks in shelters and unfamiliar kinds of shelters that we haven't tried before, like places like Wapato. I'd like to see the old Hanson Building on 122nd and Gleason where their old sheriff's office is. Put some sort of multi-use housing, affordable housing, mixed-use housing, middle housing, market rate so that we can get folks off the street. We have enough money. There is enough money in the system, but is there enough political will to say, yes, we're going to house these folks in hotels? We got $350 million. Let's get these 5,300 people off the streets and now let's case manage them and find out what their problem is. Do they need addiction services? Do they need mental health services or do they need workforce training? I never hear anyone talking about workforce training. 53% of the people who have been on the streets, before they went on the streets, University of Chicago did a report and found that all those folks were working prior to coming, prior to coming to a shelter. 43% of those people who are unsheltered, they were working and employed. It's a livability. They can't afford the rent. So what we have to do, go buy multiplexes, buy down the inflation rate, put folks in those buildings. We, we can't do that first. We're trying to house people permanently when we need to be getting these people off the street. It is not right to see these folks, just like Terrence said, have these folks on concrete and grass every night, have them move from one place to another. On 162nd, we had a whole slew of RVs. Okay, they got tagged last week. Then they moved. It's clean today. You know what? They'll be back on Sunday because they know the routine. They know the rhythm of this. We have to shake this up and say, no, no, we can ready to house y'all. And if you don't want to go, then we're going to go somewhere else.
Thank you. And Terrence, what about you? What are your views on unsanctioned camping or what, what actions would you take?
Yeah, so I definitely wouldn't re, I, I don't even think it's optional to repeal that. I think that the community is really clear about it, likes the direction that we're going in. I work in public safety. My lens is different, I think, from a lot of folks because I actually see, I see the reports and I see the data on what's happening to women and children in these encampments. It's not safe. It's not humane. It's not compassionate. I agree with everybody here. We have to house. I think there is not one of us that is not going to focus on housing as the first conversation when it comes to our houseless crisis. But we actually see more people taking shelter than we've seen in a long time. And we are finally getting people in East County to be impressed with the work and doubling back is dangerous. We have to move forward. We have to focus on housing, but we also got to get people safe and out of these encampments. So yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the ban and I see the results of it, which is people are being housed at higher rates than we've seen in the last few years. But I stand with everybody on here. Our priority must be housing, wraparound services and workforce to make sure that people can sustain and have dignity. Thank you.
Noah, what about you? What would, what actions would you take or support?
Well, I, I support the housing or the, the camping ban. And, and the reason is, is because you hear a lot, a lot of people have mentioned that we don't have enough housing and so therefore we shouldn't support the house or the camping ban. Camping ban says specifically, if we have a place for you to go, right? You can't camp wherever you want to. And so the camping ban isn't an alternative to providing more housing. It simply says you can't choose to stay on the streets when, when places are available for you. I'm a believer that we need to expand designated camping areas, right? It's not the best solution, but it's a solution where we can provide services such as clean drinking water, such as sanitation, such as public safety to the unhoused community. The other thing that it really strikes me is that I talk to people all over and they hear all the time, things like sweeps don't work. And that's true. If you think that the camping, an encampment has no effect on anybody other than the people who are living there. The reality is the neighborhoods that have a camp removed from their neighborhood think they work great. Their whole life is improved. They no longer are picking up needles in their front lawns. They're no longer seeing an increase in crime and having their cars broken into. There's a whole lot of peripheral stuff around what happens when an encampment is in the middle of a neighborhood. And I think that when we talk about where people are camping, what it means when they're camping in neighborhoods or on sidewalks or in our public parks, that there is an impact on the entire community. And we have to recognize and respond to that impact on everybody. Because while it is important that we provide the services to homeless people that homeless people need to get off the streets, to get drug and out, or drug treatment, to get mental health treatment, as, as Loretta said, to get job training, we have to recognize that they're not the only people that the city of Portland is responsible to. We're responsible to all the neighborhoods and all the families and all the homeowners and all the people who want to use our parks and our sidewalks and our streets and our businesses. And so if there is a place for you to go, I absolutely believe that there has to be that carrot and a stick to say, look, let's make this as attractive to the homeless population or the unhoused people as possible, but also. But also, you know what? You have to go.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm, as, as short an answer as you can give while still feeling your, your being true to your, to what you want to say. Steph, if you can go first on this. What's the answer for improving police response times in East Portland?
Short? I think one, I think it's, it's common and I think that we are all agreeing on this. Like when, when someone makes a call and they, they feel in distress, they want the, the appropriate response within an appropriate time using, using an appropriate mechanism. I, I grew up in, or I live in Lentz, which is the demonstration neighborhood for Portland Street Response. So I think that, you know, when we talk about a web of safety, we really need to look at the diversifying our portfolio. We have vacancies within the Portland Police Bureau. I would love to see those vacancies staffed and really looking at recruiting Portlanders as police officers. So people see neighbors first. And I also think like fully funding chat, Portland Street Response and other services, wraparound services that can ensure that we have a toolkit across acuity, that, that a low-acuity behavioral call is going to be different than, than a high-acuity call that involves immediate threat.
And just to follow up on that, would you want to expand the kinds of situations that Portland Street Response is sent out on?
Well, I would, first of all, I would love to fully fund it so it's twenty-four seven and across the city. So that would be number one. And then would love to have the conversation about expanding what that would look like for PSR.
Are you happy with kind of what their role is right now in terms of, you know, they're not responding to cases involving someone who might be suicidal or someone who, who might be in traffic or anything like that?
I think that's, that's a conversation I would really like to have with, with PSR staff. But I think, I think one, this getting it to all city. I think that that's, that's level one, right? Because we do not have that right now. We do not have all city twenty-four seven. But I would be quite open to calls around people being threatened with suicide or in traffic.
Great. Loretta, same question for you. What, what would you do to improve police response times?
In twenty eighteen, I sat down with Chief Outlaw about, you know, overtime, police, what we need. And I supported her efforts in expanding the police, and I still do support those efforts that she had talked about. Because I know as a former county commissioner and someone who has had to balance a budget, I know that our budgets are higher when we have, let's say, five hundred people. We got eight hundred. Let's just use the real, real numbers. We got eight hundred folks who are serving this entire city. But when you have those folks who are doing overtime, to pay for people's overtime is a whole lot more than to put new officers and add new officers to a bureau. And no one here has had that experience to understand the overtime cost that you get when you have, when you're short-staffed, not just in, in the, in the police, in any department. And you start paying all this overtime. It is easier and it is better. And you can answer, answer those calls a whole lot quicker if you have more people to answer those calls. And the other thing, the street response is good, but they're limited in what they can do. They, they can't pick folks up. They, they, they have all these parameters around them. We should not replace street response with, you know, public safety officers who can actually do something to help people who are in crisis.
Great, thank you. And Terrence, your thoughts in terms of how do you improve police response time? And if you want to address Portland Street Response, feel free to add that in as well.
Yeah, um, I just, I think if you want to improve police response, you got to have more police officers. I just don't see that as like a rocket science moment. Like, Portland Street Response, I agree with Steph, right? We need to make sure that they're equipped, that they're staffed, that they can deal with things that they were created to deal with. Where I might vary with some folks is that Portland Street Response can never be an answer to the things police deal with when it comes to theft, robbery, cars, all the things most people are complaining about when they're talking about police response, is rarely clear-cut mental health concerns and issues. It's generally a combination, even if we're talking about Portland Street Response and there's mental health, usually there's a threat of violence. So we just got to keep those two things really clear from each other and, and stop using politics as a means to make them at immodi with each other. Portland Street Response is an amazing thing when we have clarity about mental health crisis. Police officers are trained, equipped, and have the authority to respond to crime. That's what they should be responding to, period, point blank. So East Portland, when we're talking about lack of police response, we're not talking about Portland Street Response. We're not talking about other forms of public safety. We know we need those things. Everybody here agree about that. But we don't have enough officers. You want faster response, you get more officers. And that, that's just what it is.
Thank you. And Noah, your thoughts?
I, I think Loretta and Terrence, you know, stole most of my thunder. The answer, a short answer you could just walk away with is if you want police officers to respond more quickly, you need more police officers. And when we, when, when I talk to people in East Portland, Terrence is exactly right. When they say police officers don't respond quick enough to my emergency calls, they are talking about crime. Right? And an example of that is I spoke with this lady. The house across the street from her got broken into three times while the people were on vacation. They called the police on the first time. The police took, you know, an hour, two hours to get to them. They spoke with the officers. The officer said, if you see those people again, call us immediately. A week and a half later, same people broke into the same house. They called the police while the people were in the house. And the police didn't respond for two hours because they didn't have capacity. That just has to stop. I mean, when we look at the number of officers on average for a city the size and scope of Portland, we know that nationwide, that is approximately sixteen to twenty officers per ten thousand people of population. The city of Portland currently has twelve per ten thousand of population. So we're well below what's average and best practice for a city the size of Portland. And the people of Portland feel that deficit every time they call the police and every time they call nine-one-one.
So how do you get more officers?
Well, I think it's both filling the vacancies we have. I think that's, and, and, and that's, you know, obviously we have something like eighty-eight vacancies that were already budgeted for.
Right. And I, and I guess that's what I'm, I'm wondering, like, is there anything that you would say about how do you fill those, you know, when, when people aren't taking in?
Well, fill what? When people aren't taking?
I'm sorry, when people aren't taking those openings. They, they're not applying.
No, I think we had a very good presentation by the East Precinct Commander. And he was talking about, in fact, the police department in the last year, year and a half, two years, has been very, very effective at recruiting new officers. That it is a time-consuming process to bring officers on board and train them up to speed. But we also need a city council that's going to be supportive of the, you know, while, as Terrence said, holding people accountable to a high standard, but supportive of our law enforcement community. But we also need to make sure that once they fill the vacancies they have, that we have budget in place to get to what the best practice is for a city this size. So I think there's multiple components to them. We need to keep supporting the recruitment efforts that they're engaging in. We need to make it clear to the world, we're the United States, that Portland is a city where you want to come and be an officer, which may attract lateral hires instead of merely new officers. And we need to support the police that we have and make sure that we're not going to lose people like we did in two thousand and one and two thousand. And, you know, to, to a community where they really felt unappreciated.
Thank you. Terrence, you had a comment you want to make. If you can do that real quick and then we'll go to Candace.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we have a narrative problem. And I agree with Noah. We have to have city council that's going to fight, one, to hold officers accountable. We're not ducking accountability.
Not at all.
Armed by officer behavior. And we're going to stand, don't continue to hold police accountable to the highest standard. But we need leadership that's going to be willing to change the narrative in our city and, and stand with officers that do the job the right way.
Great, thank you. Candace, what about you? What do you think is going to help improve police response times?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I think what's, what I'm not hearing in the responses so far that I think is the core of it is that the entire point of these systems of the Portland Street Response and chat is actually to release officers from handling responses that don't necessarily require their expertise, right? And so I think it's important that we remember when people are calling nine-one-one, ultimately, they want someone to answer. But they deserve to get the right responder at the right time and for the right reason. It's clear that we need to properly staff our entire first responder system. I think adding capacity to that responder system by modernizing the ways that we send out help is important. And that is, that is at the top of my list. I'll speak to what, what we're also saying around, how do we fill those vacancies? I agree that if we have budgeted that and, and we believe that that is the appropriate amount of officers to meet the current need, I agree that we need to continue to recruit that, recruit for officers. And I actually served on the DPSST Task Force a couple of years ago. Governor Brown appointed me to that. And we were trying to get at this root issue, right, of how do we help expedite the process to ensure that we're getting officers more quickly on the street and ensuring that we're streamlining our training services so that we all have a, the same standard for what we expect from our officers? So I believe that East Portlanders, absolutely, when they call for help, they want that. I just also believe that if we don't diversify our first responder system, we're going to continue to fill Portlanders who need help.
Great, thank you. Loretta, let's make this just really quick because I want to move on to the.
So the other thing is that most of our police don't live in the city of Portland. They live outside of the city of Portland. If we start making sure that people who are on our police force live in the city in which they are, they're, they're there to serve, then they might get someplace a little bit quicker too.
Thank you. Let's see. So my Zoom display changed, so I'm not sure who goes next on this. Actually, I think Loretta, you go first on this. Let's see. What do you see yourself doing as a city council member? Like, how, how will you be spending your time? How do you define the job?
So what I, what I'm really excited about this city council, the charter mandated that we, we, we cut this city up into four, four distinct places and that we have district offices. And I'm going to be spending my time talking to people in the community because for the first time, they're going to have a, a once-in-a-generation opportunity to, to meet their council people where they're at. And we can meet them where they're at, in their own community and hear the concerns that they have. Before, people out here in East Portland, and I call it the numbers, when they needed to, to, to voice a concern, they had to take off a whole day to go down to speak at city hall, put themselves on a, put themselves on a list. And sometimes you may not even be able to get to them. So if you have offices and people and staff that are city council staff that they can actually talk to. I come from a, a background where I worked for a US senator for twenty years. And one of the things that Senator Wyden was known for was his constituent services. I was his constituent services manager. And we made it our business to make sure that we talked to everyone. We didn't push them off to others, even if they called and said, you know, the dog is barking, what do I do? We made sure we actually got a telephone number of a person and called that person and said, these people need help. We need to have that same kind of conscientious constituent services in, in every district. And that's the way I plan to spend my time with services, doing policies that are, that are, that are actually given to us by the people, not me, not my agenda, but the people's agenda.
Thank you. Terrence, if you can go next. How do you see yourself, or what, what also would you consider, you know, a successful performance as a city council member?
Yeah, I think my strength is going to be public safety and livability. I think that what I bring uniquely to council that a lot of people will just frankly cannot bring is a true understanding of public safety holistically. From the need of our officers to the need of funding the office of violence prevention completely. I will make sure, as Candace alluded to, that we have a holistic public safety system. She's right in that we have to make sure the right calls go into the right people to get the right services. So that is, that is the, one of the most important things to me is public safety. And I will be spending most of my time, like Loretta said, hearing from community, making sure I understand how they interpret public safety and bringing my lived experience and knowledge to that space. And secondly, as far as livability, we got to be the type of city. We just have to be the type of city that can bring back private investors. And I think that's a narrative, that's relationship, that's having champions who can get money folks to buy back into our city. And so those would be the main two things I focus on is, is public safety, livability. We got to get investors. We got to feel safe again.
Great, thank you. And Noah, if you can go next?
Yeah, so what I'll bring to city council and this type of city councillor I'll bring, or be, is one that works with all types of people and listens to all types of people. I don't have a background in advocacy. I don't have a background in government. I have a background of working with people. And in order to do that, you have to meet people where they are. You have to listen to them. And you have to build consensus towards a goal. And that's the kind of city councillor I will be. I, it's, it's not enough to wait, like, like Loretta said, to wait for people to come to you because the only people who will do that are professional advocates or those sorts of people. We need to talk to everybody. We need to talk to the business community. We need to talk to different, different types of community organizations and, and ethnic groups and all the different groups of people that make up District One, which is the most diverse part of Portland. And you could, and it's not enough to talk to them. You have to listen to them. They will tell you, like I said before, they will tell you what they need and what they want and what they're missing from city government. And when I talk to people in East Portland, what they talk about is hearing that a city government that will do things to East Portland regardless of whether the majority of the people in East Portland want those things to happen. That has to stop, and that's what I will be devoted to doing on city council.
Candace, what do you see yourself doing as a city council member?
I was going to ask you to repeat the question. So is that the question? It's what, what I?
It's kind of, yeah, it's wherever you really want to go with it.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Well, I think, taking it a step back, when we were talking as a city about how we wanted to run our city in this new form of government, one of the things that was really important to Portlanders in district representation was that people want to feel like their leaders can understand their lived experiences because they share them. And so when I'm talking to folks on the doors, they're really excited to see that there are people that live in their neighborhoods that are going to be able to understand their perspectives and therefore turn that into action. My expertise through Verda and through my advocacy has been how to turn those community voices into political action. Those are the skills that I'm bringing with me. As far as, you know, what I believe, I think part of the original question was like, what do I believe is the role of the new council? We know that the new council is going to be legislative. And so it's important that, one, we're spending time in our district to understand what are the policies that are going to affect our district. It's important that we're creating a logical workflow for how to communicate our policy vision to the mayor's and the CAO's office to implement via those bureaus. And in general, you know, we need to beef up our constituent services, having a robust district office, being able to host, I would love to see each district hosting council meetings for their districts as well, not just the whole city council. We can expect these Portlanders to go down to city hall to talk to their leaders. And so having a structure where we'll be able to deliver that leadership right in that, right in the community is going to make a big difference.
Thank you. And Steph?
I really appreciate Loretta and others for sharing about constituent services. When I've talked with folks, it's like, what is this new council going to do now that, you know, we're valuing apart legislative and executive function? It's like, you're going to be glorified constituent service. And I'm like, you say that as if it's a bad thing. Like, that's the idea of, you know, East Portland specifically, East Portlanders have not felt heard and have not been heard in city hall. And, and this is just such a transformative moment to be able to change that. And having been a community organizer, particularly in East Portland for the last twenty years, I've discovered, and a number of us, we were all at, or most of us were at the East Portland Action Plan Forum the other day. You know, the, the true treasure of East Portland is its people. And we have so many members in the community that in spite of a lack of investment over time, have built parks, have, you know, just created community. And so being, I am looking forward to being a councillor that one connects with a, a broad spectrum of East Portlanders, you know, throughout the course on a day-to-day basis around constituent services and of meeting people, doing community in reach. And also collaborating across, and I think Noah had mentioned this, like, that we're not always going to agree. And we need to, one of my favorite legislators referred to it as the honorable opposition. You know, the best policy comes from seeking and listening to the honorable opposition. And I think also, And I think also uh looking, I think Candace alluded to this, of recognizing that the three councillors are going to be like, we are the the group, how do we collaborate best? How do we use the best of our uh individual experiences, relationships, uh expertise to really holistically represent and deliver results for East Portland?
Great, thank you. Let's see. I've lost track of who goes first next. Noah, how about it? Oh, is it Terrence? Yeah, you're right, okay. Terrence, what levers would you pull to encourage more housing development? Or what steps would you take to dramatically change the picture on housing?
Yeah, I should I should have let Steph go first. I I just actually spent the last two days at the um Oregon Housing Conference, so I'm really grateful um for the folks. So I think I think what we need to do immediately is look at permitting and find ways to to um get that process to be way faster. If we're if we are going to reach eight thousand um homes a year, we got to streamline permitting, no question about it. And we have to be able to get our system to prioritize that streamlining, stringlining and get it going. And I mentioned this before, look, we gotta get investors to buy into the city of Portland. I'll watch this investor panel out of New York, and when they talked about Portland, they said it's not simply homelessness, it's not simply drugs. The biggest concern they have is they don't feel like um Portland has a plan to its next phases. So we got to create a plan to get investors back, permitting, narrative, safety. I think all that is part of the plan that can help us um get our city back on track. So I would say permitting and I would say narrative to get investors to buy back into our city.
Thank you. Noah, if you can go next on on housing, what would you do? What levers would you pull to increase housing development or address housing?
Well, I think Terrence nailed the permitting. I mean, clearly, when when we talk to a developer who says, in the time it took me to permit one house in or one fourplex in Portland, I built a hundred and twenty houses in Oregon City, clearly developers aren't going to choose Portland. And I think that's really what a city council has to do is is, again, it goes back to that communication. We have to talk to and more importantly, listen to and collaborate with the developers and contractors who we actually will be building the housing that Portland wants and needs. And if we listen to them and understand what is going to motivate them to build the housing that Portland wants and more import maybe equally importantly, what's disincentivizing them from building the housing that Portland wants? And um and try to start removing those barriers. If we want affordable housing, then the city of Portland has to make sure that we make it as inexpensive as possible to build. Because if we make it incredibly expensive to build, the housing by definition can't be affordable. And I think that's really the places that a city council can have a big impact is focus on on how what we're doing and how what it's prioritizing so that the developers and contractors and and people who come into our city to invest are incentivizing incentivized to build the type of housing we need and as importantly, can make money doing it.
Give an example of anything that you would, um any regulations that you would suspend or anything that you would do to try to bring the cost of housing down?
Well, again, I I I think the first one has got to be permitting. We can look at, there's other things we can look at. We can look at whether or not minimum house sizes are still appropriate. We can look at whether minimum lot sizes are still appropriate. We can look at what permitting costs for single family dwellings. We can look at um what requirements that we put on housing in Portland beyond merely code or uh code safety things or um to see if those other additional requirements are in fact necessary or simply something that would be nice but is preventing housing from being built because of their cost. We have to look at holistically everything that goes on in housing by the city and see what it causes the market to do. Because ultimately, the city itself doesn't build housing. The market does.
Okay, thank you. Candace, uh what would you do on housing? What levers would you pull?
Yeah, absolutely. So we all understand that the city needs to invest in permanently affordable housing options, especially in chronically underfunded East Portland. This involves things like growing our construction workforce with apprenticeship and job training programs. We need to assess that our assess our policies and make sure that our housing is actually affordable to East Portlanders um and also protecting affordable homes that we already have. We, everybody is talking about permitting, definitely will harp on that and say that I support the direction that the city is going to streamline our permitting system and creating a roadmap to see more housing quickly. I would definitely draw on that foundation. I think there are a couple of other tools that we could be doing. Community-led uh tax increment financing or TIF districts, like the one that I helped launch in Cully, can provide capital to build now by leveraging future property taxes, for example. And then I think we need to just follow through on the housing production strategies that we have been working on. So that includes increasing housing capacity in higher opportunity neighborhoods, revising zoning bonuses and incentives to make sure that we're getting that development quickly and uh creating more housing opportunities in uh and transportation infrastructure uh across the city.
And I'm going to add this question on, which I asked of you, Noah, and I'll come back to Terrence. But Candace, is there any uh are there any requirements or any um uh ordinances that you would you would look to suspend or change to lower the cost of housing?
I'm not going to sit on the Zoom and pretend to know I that I have the ORS code on on hand. I I don't I don't I don't know that.
Just like tree codes or like, you know, setbacks or anything like, you know, minimum lot size or anything like that? Are there are there things there that you think need to be um reevaluated?
Okay, well, I guess, you know, we definitely need to increase our opportunity to create more middle housing. I live in the missing middle housing and um it's really not just to help increase density and add more housing quickly. It also contributes to community safety. My neighbors, we have a WhatsApp group chat, we keep each other safe. I think if we can create more pockets of housing like that across the city and increase the density, that's going to help a lot.
Thank you. Steph?
Okay, um, folks have said permitting, so I won't belabor um except to add that we also need to change, I think, how um the permitting bureau or the uh PPND uh is funded uh because currently it's all through fees. So when when we do have a a depression um or recession like we did in two thousand eight, like we did a few years ago, what we lose, uh we end up laying off permitting staff. And so that means that our recovery time in terms of being able to process permits to get back on track is lagging behind other cities that have a more diversified funding stream for their permitting department. So that's one. And uh I think obviously the the housing production strategies that's going forward um is uh is really important. It's the first time we've ever had a production strategy. We've known that we've needed a lot more housing. This is the first time that we've talked about uh how we can do it. I'm really excited about the uh what what's called the inner east side for all the four floors and corner stores because of what we're seeing is res, I'm just talking like an auctioneer because we do not have enough time, but I just want to get as much as I can in. The residential infill project is really working for uh neighborhoods, like the Brentwood Darlington neighborhood, like few others that that allow like ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes pencil. But they don't pencil in inner east areas that are more amenity rich. And so like, as Noah was saying, like, you it has to pencil in order for for developers to to be able to withstand it. And so um having gentle density um in inner east is, I think, a a really solid move. You were asking like, what would he cut? And like some of it, we already did with the housing regulatory relief project, like we did a five-year moratorium. Um and there were a few parts of it I will like that gave me a little bit of heartache. But I recognize, like, for example, uh not uh being able to uh to do multifamily dwellings and exempting first floor commercial space was really hard for me. As as someone who believes in walkability and believes that um the community, part of community safety means um eyes on the street, which means, you know, a thriving commercial district. And we did it because we recognized that we are in a housing crisis and we need to put everything on the table. We need to be able to have uncomfortable conversations and to be able to uh to do a moratorium on things that we really genuinely appreciate in this particular moment in our cities' history. Um I also think um we I think you hear a lot about an office conversion uh pilot project. I think if we're talking about another thing that's deeply unpopular, I will just say this. Like, um the one thing that doesn't pop pencil, I think the conversion pilot project is good. We don't want to put a whole bunch of eggs in that basket, but we should be putting a few just to see like what a conversion pilot project could look like. I believe Prosper Portland is working on that a little bit. But one thing that doesn't pencil with that potentially is seismic retrofit of some of those buildings. And so I think that we really need to look at, do we, you know, are we willing to relax seismic retrofit? And having been someone who has lived through a tsunami, I am not comfortable with that. But currently, people are allowed to work in those buildings, they are allowed to die while working in the event of of a seismic event. Uh I know, Terrence, like, I just I just did that. But um I think that those are those are a few. Yeah, and the last I'll say, uh and I think that uh at least a few people alluded alluded to this that we have currently, um there are some apartment buildings that have been built as market rate apartment buildings that are now on sale. They are at deeply discounted rates in a couple of cases, like a five hundred thousand uh two hundred fifty thousand per square uh per unit uh cost that that we couldn't build a deeply affordable housing for for less than five hundred thousand per unit. So I think like we need to be looking at that, you know, what is the inventory of things that are currently on uh on sale? I understand that the city budget uh is not all in all in there. But I think that that is where we can knock on Metro's door, that's where we can knock on the state's door and really look to bring deeply affordable permanent housing online very quickly that is city-owned.
Great, thank you.
I have more.
Yeah, you packed a lot in already. Loretta, how about you? What we what would you do on housing?
I would use a few things. I would use the legislative process down in Salem, I would use our system development charges. And um I would I would also land bank, and I've been talking about this forever. And I think I I put that on my on on my questionnaire. We need to land bank so that we can buy down the the inflation of of property and put those folks who are in vulnerable and marginalized situations and put them in housing. Secondly, uh I am a public relations and government relations firm. Albina Vision Trust hired me this last short session session uh to get forty million dollars from the um from the legislature. And that was a big, big lift. I wasn't able to get forty million, but I was able to get twenty five million to help them purchase the old school district. And in doing so, that that made them have this this jump off point where they can create thirty five hundred new housing spaces. So I think we need to use our bully pulpit and our legislative uh agenda from the city of Portland to support projects in the community that will also bring in housing like Albina Vision Trust. We need to make sure that we have a legislative agenda that goes down to Salem and be very thoughtful and deliberate about it, about how do we go and uh secure additional funding to help some of these projects around our city uh, you know, get off the ground. We know that if we if we're building, if we're building housing, it's going to cost anywhere between four hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars a door. So if there are opportunities for us to land bank, use some of that three hundred and fifty million dollars to keep people from land bank and to make sure that there is an appropriate amount of housing for us to uh to look towards when we're saying we don't have housing. We we now, we're we're ahead of the game because we're we're accumulating more housing at a lower uh at a lower rate than it would be for us to build it. So we have to look at everything. It's not either or. We have to use our bully pulpit, use our legislative and um and our ideas and use the community to make sure that we have those kinds of opportunities. When uh Charlie Hills was in office, me and him partnered together with the ADUs. He lifted the the system development charges on new ADUs being uh built. So we we only charged taxes on the new ADU and not the entire project. And I had to go up against our uh property tax assessor and our in our chair to say, look, we can't charge the new prices just because we're putting a new ADU on. We can't reassess the entire property as being new. And they were like, yes, we can. And I was like, no, we can't. That's that's basically illegal. So me and Charlie Hills got together, went down to Salem, we got that clarified that that we couldn't do it. So we have to be very uh mindful of the different things that we can do around system development charges that uh developers do. Because what they're saying is, the reason why we only have five hundred uh multiplexes because they're assessing what does it cost for me to build? And we need to make it easier for them to do that so that we can have the housing that we need.
Thank you. Terrence, I said that you could jump in real quick if you needed to. Uh are you fine in terms of anything that you would want to reassess?
I see Noah, but I'll say this real quick. I don't know Steph, what's on the moratorium, so I'm going to be careful. But I think one of the things I heard um a developer talk about was like bird glass. Some of some of the higher cost things that um don't always practically uh impact safety inside of apartments, that that is bigger version stuff, but certainly is not a safety issue for residents. And um I don't really think poor people really can afford electric vehicles. So one of the things I would slow down is like men mandating um that electric vehicle um charging stations be at certain be dependent on how many people live in the building. So those are just some things I would look at because when it comes to affordable housing, I haven't met many people that can barely pay their rent that also have an electric vehicle working.
Thank you. Okay, um, I I'd like to move on to the next question, Noah. And so, and actually, you're first on this. And this is about the budget. You know, the mayor's been very clear, it's going to be a tough budget next year. And, you know, what would you do? Like, what are some of the the creative ideas you might have in mind? Um, would you, excuse me, look to just cut um services in order to make the budget pencil out? Excuse me.
Well, I I mean, obviously, the the budget short or the the budget issues and shortfalls are an incredibly difficult issue. And I'm not, you know, a hundred percent familiar with every single program the city of Portland runs. But what I am familiar with is we spend a huge amount of money on a lot of things and we don't seem to get the results that we're looking for. And so I the the uh, we just have to ensure or we have to focus on accountability towards results. My, in my mind, when you prioritize the budget, you look at, we should look at, what are the basic basic services that a city fundamentally is created to provide to its citizens? And those things are public safety and those things are um, you know, fire, police, you know, streets, the kinds of really basic things. And we need to make sure we're doing and funding those things before we start looking at all the other things that we would like to do but aren't the basic fundamentals of the city. And so I think abroad, across the board, equal every bureau cuts, I don't think are appropriate because we have to triage. We have to say these, some things are more important. And I'm willing to say, in my mind, law enforcement is more important and shouldn't be cut, maybe some other things can. But we also need to look at, very much like the city council just created an uh single source oversight for grants that the city is giving out so that finally, one one entity, you'll be able to ask them and they'll know every grant that the city gave out and you can see what's working and what's not working. We need really to have a similar oversight for all the contracts with not-for-profits and everything else that the city is outsourcing its services with. Because we have to have accountability. And if we're spending money on providing services and we're not getting the results, such as we have three times the number of homeless people we had, you know, eight years ago, despite spending sixty thousand dollars a year or more per homeless person, there's room in that to be cut if it's not working, right? Why are we paying for things that aren't working? And we have to be really brutal about accountability and 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 saying, if it doesn't work, we have to stop paying for it so that we can pay for things that will work.
Great, thank you. Candace, if you can go next. What would you do to uh address our budget? The tough budget that we have coming up next year? Are there, would you look at changing anything regarding revenue? Or are there cuts that you would look at? Or if you can just kind of overall address the budget issue?
Yeah, so I mean, we all know that the struggle of any elected leader is weighing what the city needs to function, what the community is asking us for, and just the reality of limited funds to accomplish both of those things, right? And so I think one of the goals of our new form of government in streamlining services is not just to improve the delivery of those services, but also to consolidate costs and increase our fiscal responsibility as a government. And so I would be really looking to our new CAO as we're uh, you know, restructuring how we uh oversee our bureaus and making sure that we're doing an audit to assess any government waste that can be addressed. Of course, ensuring that we're protecting um protecting jobs and protecting um just delivering on the urgent services that the city needs. Clearly, we need to address um our revenue issues. Again, not an expert on tax revenue and how to increase it, but definitely will be looking to my colleagues uh and experts in the field on how we can do that responsibly. I think the other thing, too, is that uh it it feels at times that um we isolate ourselves as a city and we need to do better at looking across our nation on what are other strategies that um similar cities have. And so I think that's really important to me as a leader to ensure that we're not locking ourselves into just what is our reality here, but assessing, you know, how have other cities done? but assessing, you know, how have other cities done it and trying to in, integrate some of those strategies.
And when you say protecting jobs, does that mean um, for instance, that, that you would, with consolidation, you wouldn't want to see any layoffs? Or, or what does that mean in your mind?
It just means that it's really, I understand that city workers feel fear about what consolidation would mean for their jobs. And that is uh, at top of mind for me. And so I think I'm always going to be keeping jobs at the forefront when deciding what kinds of things need to be cut. I believe that the streamlining of services will help us deliver certain services better across bureaus. And I'm hoping that that, that's definitely going to be the first place that I'm looking is essentially what I'm saying.
Thank you. Um, Steph, same question for you. What would you do to kind of confront the budget reality we've got coming?
Well, well, Noah stole my word of triage and Candace stole my word of consolidation. So thank you both. Uh, um, I, my mom was a critical care nurse um, for her entire life. And so I think, I think of, of triage as, as a critical piece. Like what are the very basic services of street maintenance, of, of first response? And uh, and also I, I do think that de-siloing, I am hopeful uh, in this, in this new form of government as we are de-siloing bureaus, that we will find cost savings through more efficient uses. You know, the, the number of times as a transportation advocate, uh, I've heard of, you know, a transportation project going through and then some months later getting, you know, ripped up in order to do uh, oh, deliver a water bureau project. So I think like some of that, how much can um, can that de-siloing and coordination across bureaus help us develop uh, uh, deliver better outcomes um, for uh, for the city? But I also think that we need to recognize that, that we are going through a, we're going to be in a very difficult budget forecast for at least the next biennium. And so um, uh, having served on uh, P V O T's Budget Advisory Committee previously, uh, I think that we need to look to uh, to community advisors um, as well as staff um, and, and work with them as elected officials to um, to identify like what are, what are the required cuts? Like what, you know, how, how can we deliver a basic level of service? Um, and bring all of the experts into the room that we can um, and, and develop, you know, a better understanding of what, uh, what options are available to us.
And if I understand, if I remember correctly from your questionnaire, though, you said that you would not look to tap P S F funds at all. Uh, how did you feel about just um, using P S F funds to help plug budget holes this past year?
I do think, that's a, that's a great question. I appreciate that. Thank you. I mean, I think that um, in the cases where it is, I believe what I said was um, when it aligns, when P S F funding aligns with the goals of, of P S F in an agency, we do have an oversight body. I would, I would definitely, uh, um, that oversight body would need to determine. But I, I do think that there are some agents, like for example, Transportation Wallet um, is one that has P S F funding that is owned by the Bureau of Transportation, that that um, that that is technically agent, agency funding that would otherwise be, be funded through city, other city funds. And so I think that, that that is a conversation that we can have some uh, agency work. Uh, but I think that that absolutely needs to go be in line with what the P S F goals are. Uh, and it needs to go through the oversight body as directed by voters.
Okay. Um, let's see, I think Loretta, if you can go next.
Yeah. So I think what separates me from the rest of the, the group is that I've, you know, I have passed in budget and balanced a multi-billion dollar uh, county budget. Our county budgets are basically funds from property taxes. Our city budget are from fees and the B I T I, which is the Business Income Tax Licensing. So I would look at the, at the budget and see what our operating budget is. So you always get a piece of paper and it tells you what your operating budget is. And then what, it'll tell you what your um, one-time-only money is. So first, I would make sure that our operating budget that we had to operate the city, those services that are essential to the city, that we had enough. Then if there were extra stuff that we were paying with one-time-only money, and I think where cities get in trouble, they use, they call it the one-time-only pot, but they've been funding this particular program year after year after year with one-time-only money. So if there were other needs that we had that we needed to operate our city services, you can turn one-time-only money into permanent money. You just have to divide it by the amount of money that you have and put it into like reserve for three years. So doing that, looking at what's on the table. So I'd have to look at that, then I'd have to look at what's on the debt service. And then I would look, and then you have a third rail, which is the community. Community always came to the county because they were in, in need of something, because we were the safety net government. So what I did with a coalition of Latino Network Self-Enhancement, N A Y A and Urco, they were asking for money, you know, uh, exponential amount every single year. So I said, let's do this. I know about this program on the federal level that will give at-risk programs for youth development. Let's try to go after that money. So I put money into the budget to get them a, a grant writer. And we went after the promised neighborhood for three years. We had the support of the senators, we had support of our, our congressional leaders. And we got thirty million dollars. That, so then that took some pressure off the county to give these folks county money. We partnered with them. We, we, we also gave them the million-dollar match that they needed in order to get the federal money. So we need to look at those kinds of partnerships, those kinds of alliances, so that we're not taking the, the, the brunt of this, of this huge um, uh, budget on our backs for, for, for nonprofits. We've identified other federal sources that can be helpful. And so that thirty million dollars is there in the last year of their, of their, of their uh, five-year project. They got an extra year during COVID because of the, the COVID crisis. But those are the things that I'm good at. The last ten years that I worked for Senator White and I helped to manage his multi-trillion-dollar federal budget. That's what I worked on every year. So I'm not afraid of big numbers and I'm, I'm understanding on how this local government works, how the state government works and how that intertwines with the federal government. So you need someone who has a thirty-thousand-foot look at where the funding sources is in addition to private funding sources, to make sure that we have the, the things that we need to go forward.
Thank you. Um, and Terrence, Terrence finally you, um, what would you do to address Portland's budget problems?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Loretta. She's seen the big budgets and I, and I look forward to working with her and learning from her. Um, but I think in a very fundamental way, um, you, it's, it's running a business is pretty simple, right? You evaluate what don't work, like Noah talked about, and you cut the fat. And I know that's often a hard thing to say and think about, but internally in government, we have a repetition of the same services and the people doing those services. It don't matter if it's um, if it's in gun violence. We have three or four different um, departments dealing in some form of gun violence. And they're really just overlapping. So we need to figure out what services are open, overlapping. And we need to merge those, make them healthy, make them work. But if, if seven people is doing the same job in seven departments, that is ridiculous, right? And so we have to be honest about looking at that and making sure that we're cutting the fat and being real about overlapping the services. And then I think Candace spoke to this and Loretta spoke to this. We have to have partnerships outside of this city. We have to look to the state, we have to look to the federal government, we have to look to the county. Um, and to Loretta's point for long-term funding. We don't want to be right back at this table in a year trying to fund Officer Violence and Prevention. So relationships and partnerships without that. And lastly, what I will say is that we have done terrible in um, in the fact that we tax higher incomes, yet we're losing those higher incomes. So not just how we figured this budget shortfall out, but how do we think five or 10 years from now about how to get tax uh, money rotating and back into our um, city so that we can self-sustain?
Thank you. Um, I think we probably have time for just one question. Um, which one? Um, okay, Candace, you'll go first. And I think we'll do, should the city play an expanding role in behavioral health services? Multnomah County is responsible for it, but do you see the city taking a, a specific roller? Or um, what would you, you know, should the city stay out of it?
That's an interesting question. I mean, I think ultimately we are a team. And I really see the city as being responsible for hard infrastructure, whereas this, this county is responsible for more of those human services. So I don't think it's necessarily a, should we stop doing this altogether? I think it's more so assessing, just like we're talking about internally in our city government, where are we, where do we have redundancies? I think we should assess our relationship with the county and also see if there are redundancies and see who is the better partner to take on that work.
How would you um, you know, because obviously you know, the, the Home, Joint Office of Homeless Services, there's been a lot of tension about that. Um, how would you partner with the county? Like what would you do to kind of make sure that they're meeting their obligations, both in terms of providing adequate behavioral services or even on the homelessness front?
I think in general, we understand that if we don't have goals, we can't meet them. And I think ultimately that was the, the whole point of entering this agreement was together, we have to solve this problem. And so, and we're putting together our energy, our resources, our expertise to do that. Um, so I, I, I believe, you know, I think that we need to, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Um.
Just in terms of anything, no problem. Um, like if there's anything else regarding um, just ensuring accountability or um.
Got you, yeah, yeah, yeah. So uh, that was what I was saying about, we need to have a, a correct goal. So that, that's really what I'm going to be looking at in this collaboration and with any collaboration. What are the outcomes? How are we measuring those and how are we moving um, towards those? And, and that's what I'm really hoping that this new form of government will uh, allow us to, to have better strategies in that way. Because right now, everything is so siloed, uh, including our relationship with Multnomah County, I think is siloed. So I think, I'm hoping that we can all agree to some milestones that we'll reach together.
Thank you. Um, Steph, um, same question for you. Do you think that the city needs to play a bigger role in behavioral health services?
Sure, I, I want to acknowledge what the question that we just had before this, which is, we don't have money for the thing, the services that we are currently tasked with. Um, and I think that we need to do less better. So um, I, and I agree, I think in the new form of government, what Candace just said of, you know, how do we, as we are developing committees, you know, that is one of the, the first tasks of establishing this new form of government, is establishing new committees. How do we ensure that a committee that um, that engages um, with the joint office, with the county um, is set up for success, that we can reset that relationship, that we can um, ensure that there's accountability mechanisms?
Thank you. Um, let's see, Terrence, if you can go next. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Loretta.
So back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, um, the county and the city, they did a, a M O U where we kind of, the city, they were taking on social services and they did a, a little bit of funding for social services. So we went through our budgets and we took out all the social service uh, things that we did over in the city side and we transferred it over to the county services. And any of those infrastructure things, we, we passed on to the city. So we have done that and um, I disagree with Steph. We do have enough money in the system to do our operating costs. What we don't have enough money for, because we're doing things that are outside of city services, that, those are the things that get confused, like um, the, the, the first providers that, that you were talking about earlier. We, that's not necessarily a city service. That is a county service that should be done on the county side and the county should actually be paying for that. We have more than enough money in our system. It's, like I said again, you gotta go to that one-time-only pot that's, that's outside of the, the regular operating. We have a regular operating budget in the city and we definitely have enough money for that. Where we get into trouble and because we've paid for it year after year, people think that that is a city service is on this other side with the one-time-only thing. And so that's where we need to take a look at, how many of these programs have we been funding year after year after year after year that should be in our regular operating budget? Or are these programs things that we need to take out of our budget in total? So that's, that's the ballgame. We have taken pretty much all of the social services out of the city. And, and we don't need to do that. Like I said, there's more than enough money in the system to do the things we need to do. We're going to have to make the hard cuts on that one-time-only services that we have.
Great, thank you. Um, Terrence, do you think the city needs to take a bigger role in behavioral services? Or how should it ensure that the county is doing what the city needs it to do?
I feel like you just answered the question. No, no, I don't think we, I don't think we get involved any more than what we are. Um, like Loretta said, we have a memorandum of understanding. We need to hold the county accountable to the funds that we give them in the joint office. I don't think the city needs to pick up new stuff. I don't think we need to add things to ourself. I, I agree with Loretta. We need to look at what we're investing in and even if it's our responsibility and should we be expecting our counter, our county partners to take those things on and do better? Um, I think our expectation from city council should be listening to community. When they say things aren't working, we should be talking to our county partners and um, having standards as Candice alluded to and talked about, like what is the matrix? Are we accomplishing them? And if we're not, we need to hold the county accountable. But the city does not need to add new stuff to itself. And what does not belong to us, in my opinion, we should hand over, um, create expectations and standards and hold the county accountable.
Thank you, and Noah?
Uh, everybody has said almost everything that I think on this issue. At least each person has said something, some part of it. I think Terrence is absolutely right. And, and Steph is absolutely right. When you're already looking at how are we going to address budget shortfalls, adding additional things doesn't seem to make sense. Um, and Loretta is right that we, the money, we have to look at and hold accountable uh, you know, our partners at, at the county and we've moved all of those services to them. We have to make sure that they're living up to that obligation as partners with the city. But no, I don't, I don't think we want to at this time take on additional roles if we're already thinking about how are we going to fund the roles that we already have responsibility for.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I think we have time, if you guys each want to do like thirty seconds to kind of wrap up and say, you know, I, I would actually like to hear like, you know, um, you know, whether, there's more than a hundred people running for, for office um, uh, in Portland. What particular quality um, idea or um, just skill that you're bringing that no one else has? And you can, if you can kind of respond to that as well as just do a, a quick closing, that'd be great. Um, and we can start with Steph.
Uh, well, thank you very much for this time. Um, again, my name is Steph Ralph, uh, running for Portland City Council. Um, I think the, the unique skills that I bring, um, and I just also, I'm so grateful for this new form of elections and government because like, I'm so appreciative of everyone who is running and everyone, everyone who's running for, to represent District One here. And uh, I think the unique skills that I bring among the one hundred is uh, a coalition building across a lot of differences um, over the course of twenty years. And, and uh, and a, a deep understanding of land use and housing policy, which I think is just really important for our housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Loretta?
I think what separates me and what's the difference between me and the hundred and eight is that I've been elected. I've, I've passed a balanced budget. I have a track record of going into the community, bringing in those, those um, relationships and making sure that community is heard, um, not just through their voices, but through policy and through um, monies in, back into the community. And, and I hear them, um, that is what I'm, I'm known for. But what is so important is that, you know, I live in East Portland. I've lived here for thirteen years. I have a duplex, my son and his, and his wife and my grandchildren live next door. They go to school here. And from where I'm sitting here, I, I'm a grandmother. I think I'm the only grandmother here. And I take my grandkids to school sometimes. They have to walk over unsanctioned uh, homeless camps and, and through R Vs to get to school. They're ten years old and six years old. So I want to make sure that our children have a, a opportunity to go to school safely, that they have an opportunity not only just to survive in this community with their education and, and going further to, to getting jobs. I want them to be able to thrive. And I don't think anybody is any more excited about Portland than I am because I have not given up on Portland yet. I, um, this is not just something that I do. I have a business. Um, this is not about money. This is about being a public servant. I am a policymaker, I know how to do that. And so coming to this new form of government, being legislative and policy oriented, that is my best strength. And so I think we need people who are experienced like me and, and others who are um, new to this to be able to learn and to be able to create a city that we all can be proud of.
Thank you. Terrence, how about you?
Yeah, I think I alluded to this earlier. Like when we look at the polls, um, public safety is the number one priority for East Portland. And, and I agree with Candace, there's a lot of variety of public safety that we have to consider. Um, but what we've seen that's really, really important for community That we have to consider. But what we've seen that's really, really important for community. Is those crimes that hurt people and harm people. There's nobody, and I'll stand on this, out of the hundred. That have the relationship I have both from community and relationship with policing to get the best. Version of public safety that's important to our community. From being a person who's been held accountable. For committing a crime to being a person that was blessed enough to be a part of our restorative justice. Theories in our city, right? The process that we create, as well as a person who lost a cousin to police violence. As well as work with our officers every day to reduce gun violence. I bring a holistic, real-life approach to public safety. And out of the amazing hundred and eight folks. You know, like Loretta, I'm one of the only two in our district that gets. P P A and fire. And that speaks to my vision and understanding of public safety. So that's where I stand apart. And I I'm so happy that I got a lot of folks that are strong and amazing in other places that I am not. But in that space, public state safety, I've worked in a way that most people haven't.
Thank you very much. Noah?
I think I I just bring a breadth and depth of real-world experience that very few or if any other candidates bring. I I I have a whole career of working collaboratively with all kinds of different people. From all kinds of backgrounds. I have that background in business. I have a background in practicing law. I have. You know, and and I have a background working, you know, as a taxi driver and working with taxi drivers. Who are the most diverse group of people you could possibly imagine. And equally importantly, I have a track record of success. When when failure doesn't simply mean applying for another grant, right? Failure means you go out of business and we succeed and I have succeeded. And I think that's incredibly important. And I've spent the last eight years working with city staff and commissioners and. All kinds of people to try to make realistic and I think positive changes to city code. I've drafted. Code provisions to hope to get passed. I really believe that unlike a lot of people, I can hit the ground running. Because of my depth and breadth of experience and my understanding of how things work. And the effects of what the city does on people in the real world.
Great, thank you. And Candace?
Well, thanks again for having me today. You know, I think my, what I'm bringing to the table is that I have the heart of a community advocate. That has been at the forefront of some of Portland's biggest movements for change. I also have the skills of an executive leader that's been running a nonprofit that's already delivering for East Portland. And I share the experiences of my East Portland neighbors. East Portland is where I could buy my first home. I don't come from a wealthy family. I come from an immigrant family. And when I knock on the doors in East Portland, I see myself and my personal journey reflected on that doorstep. And lastly, I'll just say, I'm really proud of the endorsements that I've earned. Because when you look at my endorsements page, you see truly a diversity of political opinions on that list. And and I actually called one of my trade union endorsers and I was like, tell me why you chose me. Because we don't, we don't agree on everything. And they told me it's because we understand that you're always willing to come to the table with honesty. You're always going to give your side, but you're going to listen to ours. Those are the skills that I believe I bring. And I think that being a champion for East Portland, I will be able to deliver on. East Portland's promises. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone. That was really great. We really appreciate your time. We'll be in touch if we have.
Great conversation. Thanks to all of you.
Yeah, thank you.